And first, if everybody's ready, first thing on the agenda, we have the CEO of the Tampa Bay Lightning, yay, Steve Greggs here, and I'd just like to say a few words, and you might notice that shiny thing there.
Well, thank you, Chair, we appreciate it. We appreciate you having us all here today with our favorite trophy that we like to tour around town. I will tell you, this is the hardest trophy to win in sports.
I believe it.
It was even harder this year. Our team was up in Toronto and Edmonton for 65 days in a hotel, and came back with the trophy. And hopefully next year, if we go back to back, we'll all be able to celebrate together. I will tell you, though, during a pandemic, we were all with our families. So if there was any bright spot in winning the Stanley Cup, I think we were all with our families cheering on, wearing our Lightning gear. And we really do appreciate the support of Pinellas. We have 3,000 season ticket holders that go over the bridge every day to come to our games. On average, we have 30 to 35% of our fans are from Pinellas. So we're very appreciative, and we love the Bay Area, and we are a team that gives back as much as we can, especially when we talk about youth hockey. We have, we've opened up a number of outdoor rinks. We opened up one in Oldsmar last winter, and we have another one opening up in Pinellas Park really soon. And there'll actually be 11 of them that we'll have in the community now that are all for our youth to play at. We also are truly invested in the Clearwater Ice Rink, as well as your Oldsmar, to have the youth playing there and doing everything we do with Build the Thunder and equip the Thunder, as well as train the Thunder. What's even more important is that with our Community Hero program that has been going on for the last nine years, we've given $4.8 million into the Pinellas community for all those people that are doing God's work in this community. So with that, we know that you've given so much to us. It's really important that we give back to this community, and thank you for everything you've done. So we thought we'd bring the trophy by. I know you were all able to get some photos. I know, Commissioner, you were looking to take it home, but we have to take it with us. So with that, say thank you, and go Bolts, and we'll see you with the season starting real soon. Thank you.
We hope to see you back here. We'll see you back here next year.
We'll bring it back next year. Thank you.
All right. All right. Well, now we have public comment. And, okay, I guess we can start with the people in the room. Okay. Thank you very much. Is this general? Okay. First up is David Ballard Geddes, Jr.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners, or good afternoon. David Ballard Geddes, Jr., I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. Over 12 years ago, Pinellas County began mandating that all the residents begin paying a reclaimed water availability fee, dictating that we all pay for the privilege to access a third-party installation, imposing a water tax. The county, in relation to this fee, has aided this occupation in taking hostage my essential water supply and rate, and derogated my access to my water needs, making my vital water access a privilege, denying me my human rights. Simultaneously, the county coercively, through the medium of its ad valorem, has sold itself to the Water District in a fee simple quid pro quo refractory agreement, which tells us that the county is either unwilling to take responsibility for its wasting of all the water through its overall deliberate delinquency of all its member governments, and is refusing to correct its misgivings in the creation of a water crisis that they manifested. Nor do they want to take the liability of the potential health complications that reclaimed water may deploy upon an unsuspecting civilian population. Reclaimed water definitely is not safe for humans to be breathing. Neither the chlorine nor the fecal nitrates is anything we should be inhaling as our sprinkler systems recklessly throw it about in the air for our consumption, undermining the general welfare of society, both the county and the Water District. Instead of finding ways to reduce water usage and not use so much water, continue to carelessly overdevelop, taking no real conservation measures into consideration. Compounding the government's irresponsibility on a multitude of levels, both have continued to promote destruction of green space, erasing natural wetlands, and eliminating coastal ecology. Disconcerting to me, both continue to appease their individual political interests and to pursue personal aggrandizements in the buildup of a state of contrived anarchy through the wanton act of neglecting their role of proper stewardship of our God-given resources. If anyone is to put an end to the legitimacy of this future forward operation, it is the proactive, comprehensive demagoguery taking place in and of the current establishments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Greg Pound.
Greg Pound, Pinellas County. The issue that I'm bringing here is the Bill of Rights and sovereign immunity. Now, it's amazing how the framers said, if you don't give up what's wrong, you lose your rights. When you make laws for drugs, immorality, anything along that line, them or not, the word "rights" comes from the word "righteousness." So the framers, when they framed our Constitution, their idea was that we created what is called the Protestant Constitution, where we are to legislate rights, not sovereign immunity. Listen to the definition that you guys have created through Tallahassee for sovereign immunity. It says, "Sovereign immunity is a created legal doctrine teaching sovereign or states cannot commit any legal wrong and is immune from civil suit or criminal prosecution." So all these people working for the state now, they can commit any crime. The word "sovereign" means supreme ruler. These are your supreme rulers. Ask yourself, why is this vaccination starting off in Pinellas County? You go and look up Dr. Boyle, the bioweapon creator for the United States of America, and listen to what he says just a couple days ago, what this vaccination is going to do to the people of America. You people have sold this country out for money. You're traitors. And now you've got sovereign immunity. You can rape people's children, you can kill people on the street, you can take people's kids. Everyone that works for the government has what is called in our system sovereign immunity, and they get away with any crime they want. What do you American people think about this? That your leaders can do anything they want, and they cannot be held responsible. Look it up. Just Google sovereign immunity and listen to what it says. Look it up and read it. We have traitors now representing us. These people here have been so long in the political game of Pinellas County, it's like a merry-go-round. They keep going around and around and around and around, just like our Chair. She was the mayor of Largo. She wouldn't let me speak there. I bring up the issue of the pedophile ring that the police was running, and they tried to shut me down for exposing that with the newspaper article. So these people are immune. They're not representing you people of Pinellas County, the United States of America. They're traitors, they're globalists. They've sold us out, and our country's in big trouble because we have traitors now running it for money. They've traded your rights. And the Bill of Rights means we live by one thing, what is right, and it applies equally to everyone in our court system. And I want to know why no one's standing up to Robert Guatieri on the Sheriff's Department. Out of all these deputies who went to, who's representing the law enforcement, the star of David, why they are allowing this guy, this, and him, because he's protecting these people. That's why I ran for sheriff. That's why Randall Jones, Black Randall Jones, 18 years on the Sheriff's Department, ran for sheriff. And when he lost, he had to leave the county. He had to leave Pinellas County. Me and him tried to get Jim Coats out of office because we knew, we know the corruption is going on here.
Mr. Page, your time is up. Thank you. Next up is Pastor Mark Johnson.
I'd like to say good afternoon to the county here today. I'll tell you, I went to work for the county about almost 15, 20 years ago, and I managed to retire. But, and I always thought about coming back to the county some kind of way. But today, I kind of come to help us to better see what's going on and how to attack this thing. Because something is going on in our country, in our country, and really the whole world. And boy, people are really, what's going on? What's happening? You know, to put it in a nutshell, you know, we've had a couple of wars. We call them World War I, and then we had World War II. And somewhat, we somewhat kind of conquered them. It took a whole lot of lives from both sides, but finally, we kind of concluded some kind of way, and we were able to come out of those wars. But now we're in a war that we are fighting, and we don't know how to fight. Matter of fact, this war that has attacked us today, we can't even see it. And really, guys, you know, to be honest, we've been in this war all along. But now what's happening is the Creator is putting it in a way where we can identify. Man, something has happened, and it might hit me next. And so the question is, if it does hit, am I qualified? So I come here today, guys, as a qualified Pinellas County loyal citizen. And really, kind of, I would listen to Brother Pound, and he say, our Constitution, our country, is on what's right. What's right today? Well, what's right is, listen, guys, this is God's world. And if we all reject Him, He gonna reject us. As a matter of fact, we already rejected, but He have made a way for us to come out. That way is the Lord Jesus Christ and Him alone. And I know our country says, hey, if you believe something, you're okay. No, you're not. There's one way to get right with God, His name is Jesus Christ. And I come here to remind us, if we don't wake up, listen, you might not, this COVID thing might not grab you, but there's other Z's out there that are going to grab a hold of you. And God wants your attention. And that's all I'm asking us to do, is to submit to His calling. Jesus, I'm a sinner. I'm lost. I want to be saved. I want to be a part of what real life is about. His name is Jesus Christ. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Dawn Bowler.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Are the measures being taken to stop the spread counterproductive? Is there an illusion of controlling, but in reality, creating an environment for viruses and other adverse effects to thrive? According to the World Health Organization, close to 800,000 people die due to suicide every year, which is one every, which is one person every 40 seconds. There are indications that for each adult who died by suicide, there may have been more than 20 others attempting suicide, equaling a minimum of 16 million attempts. According to the United Health Foundation, in 2018, there were an estimated 1.4 million suicide attempts, and more than 48,000 deaths by suicide, making it the 10th leading cause of death in the United States. By the time I'm done speaking, five people will have taken their life, and 100 will have attempted. Mental health seems to focus on suicide and substance abuse, but misses a mark on the incapacitated state of physical health. Psychologists in the field of psychoneuroimmunology have shown that the state of mind affects one's state of health. In the early 1980s, psychologists Janice Kiecholt Glaser and immunologist Ronald Glaser were intrigued by animal studies that linked stress and infections. From 1982 through 1992, they conducted a study on medical students. Among other things, they found that the student's immunity went down every year under the simple stress of the three-day exam period. Test takers had fewer natural killer cells, which fight tumors and viral infections. They almost stopped producing immunity-boosting gamma interferon, which mediate antiviral and antibacterial immunity, and infection-fighting T cells responded only weakly to test tube stimulation. When we're stressed, the immune system's ability to fight off antigens is reduced. That is why we are more susceptible to infections. The stress hormone corticosteroid can suppress the effectiveness of the immune system, for example, lowering the number of lymphocytes, which are white blood cells that are one of the body's main types of immune cells. Anxiety can trigger your fight-or-flight stress response and release a flood of chemicals and hormones, such as adrenaline, into your system. If you repeatedly feel anxious and stressed, or it lasts a long time, your body never gets a signal to return to normal functioning. This can weaken your immune system, leaving you more vulnerable to viral infections and frequent illness. Short-term suppression of immune system is not dangerous. However, chronic suppression leaves the body vulnerable to infections and disease. We have started to hear COVID fatigue that includes not only exhaustion, but stress, anxiety, depression, and yes, suicide, and our bodies are not receiving the signal to return to normal. That is why I ask if the given remedy for COVID spread is counterproductive, given the now chronic mental responses, creating a prime environment to instead thrive and spread. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Aiden Barnes. Aiden Barnes.
All right. Hello. My name is Aiden Barnes. Do I need to say my address, or? Okay, I won't worry about it. I'd like to make this clear. This is not constitutional to force people to cover their faces for months or even years. This is what it's leading to, forced masking for years, and I'm not okay with that. Wearing a mask is a personal and an individual choice, and should not be forced by mandate by county government. I stand for freedom against the Pinellas County mask mandate, and I implore Governor DeSantis to help us because at this point, we need you. So I'm hoping that he has some friends or family in this county, somebody's listening, and can implore the governor, step up, intercede for us, intervene with an executive order, declare no fines for businesses like you made an executive order against fines for individuals. It's been months. We have no hope for this forced mask mandate to be lifted. It was extremely disheartening to watch the recent press conference with Sheriff Bob in Berry Burton. They threatened to enforce fines on local businesses that are already hurting. It has been months. We are continually taking steps backward instead of forward. When will the people of Pinellas decide enough is enough? The government is supposed to work for us and not the other way around. If you've had enough, join us at the next Board of County Commissioners meeting to speak and to peacefully protest. We will be here, and we're not going away until masking is no longer forced, but is a choice left up to the individual. Next, I'd like to read the Pinellas County mask mandate, Section L. "These requirements do not apply to a person who has trouble breathing, or while a person is unconscious or incapacitated." M. "These requirements do not apply if following these requirements would be detrimental to health, safety, or security." "If this exception is being asserted for health reasons, the person asserting this exception is not required to carry or produce documentation verifying the health condition or to specifically identify the health condition to the business. These requirements may not be applied in a manner that would conflict with the ADA." I have an exemption, but some businesses are too afraid to let me in. They're too afraid because they are threatened with fines. Instead of working to educate businesses on exemptions so people like me can live our lives in peace, there's more chaos and turmoil, and it's never-ending. It's been months. I would just like to live my life in peace. I don't want to be harassed. I don't want to be thrown out of businesses. Because when they ask me to leave, I leave, but they're not educated that some people do have an exemption. This is not about protecting citizens, because if it was, you would work to protect those with exemptions. What steps are you going to take to ensure businesses allow people with exemptions that are listed in your mandate? Hillsborough, Pasco, and Pinellas.
Your time is up, I'm afraid.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Kate Alonso, or Callie, sorry.
Okay, hi, everybody. My name's Callie Alonso. And I just wanted to read you a couple of things. I'm here because I also would like this mandate lifted, as well as the local state of emergency. So this is a couple of comments. This is from some ER doctors that had written this. I just want to read you part of this. This is Dr. Farnatano in Contra Costa County. This is in California, but as we know, what's happening out there. So they say, "We're writing to you with deep concern regarding more lockdown measures for our county." And I feel like this really applies here, too. The lockdown measures are even more extreme in California, as we know, but here in Pinellas, somehow, we're trying to get to that point. I'm not sure why. "So we feel the science is clear that more lockdowns leads to much more non-COVID morbidity and mortality, as supported by the CDC. We're confused as to why this is happening, as we're often overcapacity in our hospitals every winter, and we've never done this previously. We also run our ICUs normally at a high rate of occupancy, as this is most cost-effective. So here's the issues in a nutshell. Excessive PCR testing is leading to numerous false positive results." I mean, I have already friends and family who've had the same thing. One person actually had this happen. The husband almost didn't get the help he needed because he kept getting false positive tests. Eventually, the test came back negative, and they found out what was really wrong. Going back to this, so there's many false positives. And then, for the sake of illustration, you know, there's a, let's say there's a 98% test. That's too far, as far as, sorry. Let me go back here. Anyways, the point is, it's too sensitive, these tests. I think you've heard this before. We're getting a lot of false positives. Again, we usually do have a lot of stuff happening in the ICUs as far as flu season. We don't hear anybody talking about that anymore. When you test like this for everybody that comes into your hospital, hospital COVID patient numbers will rise because you're simply capturing more asymptomatic disease in patients who are otherwise visiting the hospital for other reasons. So public policy is being based on these erroneous numbers and assumptions. Public policies with shutdowns, various closures, and it leads to excessive non-COVID-related deaths. Anyway, this goes on and on, but I think you understand the point. You've heard a lot about this. You know, I, like Aiden, too, have an exemption, but yet I get kicked out of businesses all the time. And, you know, is that really what we want to be doing for our citizens here? I think we do want to protect people, but we're also adults. We should know how to take care of ourselves. We know how to do things that actually help our immune system to be boosted. I haven't been sick in years. I'm out and about all the time. So I think we need to take that point to account. We're allowed to go to the beach without a lifeguard, yet we are not allowed to walk around without a mask. It doesn't make any sense. So I would hope you guys would listen to these things, listen to what we're saying. There's a lot of people out here who would like these lifted. Let us live our lives. You know, let us be responsible the way we should be. You shouldn't have to take all this responsibility on to helping us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Virginia Frizzle. Virginia Frizzle.
Hello, Commissioners. Here I bring myself here on this beautiful Tuesday. Obviously, I'm here on the mask mandate. My name is Virginia Frizzle. I guess we already know that. You have my address. The mask mandate has shown us that our Pinellas County Board of Commissioners are either, and I'd like an answer to this question. Which one of these two are you? You're either one of these. Let's see which one you answer. Or if I, we as your citizens and people that voted for you get an answer, let's see. Are you either in too much fear to see the true scientific evidence and are only listening to the propaganda narrative? Or are you just corrupt board members who are getting paid to push the suppression? We want to know which it is, and whichever excuse applies, you are not fit to be on the board, and we will have you removed. No fines for businesses, and I implore the governor, that I pray that he's listening today, that he makes this clear for his people of Florida, so that the Commissioners will know that they are very unconstitutional. And I hope it comes back to you. Jewel White advises you how unconstitutional this is. Thank you for your time. Have a wonderful week, because we are not going to give up on this.
Thank you. Shannon Brooks, did you want to speak now, or? Item 20, okay. Please.
Good day. I'm here because of the order that you told our businesses to, that you're basically punishing our businesses. They should have freedom to do whatever they need to do to get their customers in and out of the store. Telling them they have to mandate masks or you're going to fine them is ridiculous. There should be personal choice on these masks. A lot of people can't breathe in them. I am one of them, unfortunately. And that's what my piece is to say here today. Thank you. Have a great day. And that's what my piece is to say here today. Thank you. Have a great day.
Okay. Onto the consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be pulled? Oh, what? Oh, I'm sorry. How could I forget? What do we have online, Brian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, if there are any citizens that wish to be heard online, go ahead and raise your hand in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine if you're on the telephone. And Madam Chair, our first speaker is Nicole Matthews. Nicole, if you'll go ahead and unmute and give us your spelling and address for the record. I have three minutes to address the board.
Thank you. Nicole Matthews, M-A-T-T-H-U-S, 1655 Narnia Court, Dunedin, Florida. I'm calling just three simple asks. One, keep the mask mandate. Two, we would like to see an increase in conservation funding in Pinellas County. We plan on working with you on this in the future. And three, please provide the necessary funding to purchase the Gladys Douglas Preserve. And that is all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, we have four other speakers that wish to be heard. Our next speaker is Glenn Ryeing. Glenn, if you could go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to address the board.
Thank you. My name is Glenn Ryeing. I am at 524 61st Street South, St. Petersburg, Florida. I've come before the board to discuss a thing, an article that has come out through Florida Politics about Governor DeSantis suggesting that people take the vaccine in a half-dose, the Pfizer vaccine is what I mean. Pfizer's, according to Pfizer spokesperson that I talked to, and it can be found on C, a website called C-V as in Victor, D as in David, vaccine.com. The manufacturer's recommendation is that the dosage for people is to get .3 milliliters and two shots three weeks apart. Governor DeSantis has requested or suggested that people can only, should only have to get one shot, and that causes people to get only a 50% prospective immunity off of the COVID virus as opposed to 95% if they received both shots. So what I'm asking for the board today, and especially through the Pinellas Public Health System, is just to put out the dosage recommendations through Pfizer. It can be found on their website that I just previously mentioned. And also for these mask mandates, please wear a mask. It does do, it does work. And with the vaccine coming out now, it won't be for long. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Beth. I don't have a last name, so Beth, if you'll go ahead and unmute and give us your first, last name, spelling, and address, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Okay, my name is Beth Hobind, H-O-B-I-N-D. I live at 1996 Whispering Way in Tarpon Springs. Things are starting to speed up in the development of open spaces in Pinellas County as we have been advocating to preserve the Douglas property, which looks like it really may happen, thanks to all of you who've been helping out on this. Other areas are currently being threatened. Annquoth Harbor in Tarpon Springs is proposing a 404-unit luxury apartment building to be built on the Annquoth River with only a 50-foot setback from the river itself. This is the old Walmart site, which was discarded by them because of public outcry and now about to be developed. And this piece was listed as one of your 60 sites in Pinellas County that were important green spaces. To make matters worse, the Tides developer is moving forward with his development plans. I walked the adjoining preserve just last week, and what a beautiful property. I ain't lunch overlooking the Tides Golf Course. This has to be preserved. Another property on your list of 60. And finally, the West Klosterman Preserve, though only 14 acres, adjoins the 76-acre Mariner Point Management Area, which would create 90 acres of preserved-for-all-time green space in the county. This property is also on your list. The speed of development is crescendoing, and I urge the Commission to work quickly to find ways to save our large, open green spaces for our children and their children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have three remaining speakers that wish to be heard. Our next speaker is Karen Mullins. Ms. Mullins, if you'll go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record, we'll have three minutes to address the board.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Karen Mullins, M-U-L-L-I-N-S, Dunedin, Florida. I'd like to say that I am in favor of saving the Gladys Douglas property along with the Annquoth property. We're losing these properties at an amazing rate. And I think it's something that we need to do for the health of our community. The second is, I'd like for the Commission to consider keeping the state of emergency going. We're at a pivotal point in the pandemic where we're reaching highs. And we need to stay, be steadfast in this, at this point. I'd also like to discuss the fact that some of the county boards are having difficulty getting quorums in semi-mixed meetings. I'd like to offer or discuss with any one of you how we can mitigate this with hybrid meetings. One of the meetings that we were not able to participate on the phone because we were told if there wasn't a quorum in the room, that nobody on the telephone could comment at all, even on non-action items. So with that, I want to say thank you and looking forward to a lovely 2021. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, for the record, we have four remaining citizens with their hands up. Our next speaker is Craig Murtha. Craig, if you'd go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
My name is Craig Murtha. I'm at 145 Goma Drive, Largo, Florida. And my name is, oh, anyhow, last name is M-U-R-T-H-A. I want to thank all of you for the work that you're doing to save the Gladys Douglas Preserve and all of the other precious lands. Unfortunately, even with all of the good efforts, we just don't have enough money set aside to aggressively pursue these lands and make realistic offers that reflect the current market values. I think we can all agree that the current $15 million over 10 years is inadequate to achieve our preservation goals. If we're going to be able to make realistic offers on the 60 properties that are on the land preservation list, we're going to need something more like $100 million over the next five years. Yes, that sounds like a lot of money. But when you divide $100 million up amongst nearly 1 million residents of Pinellas County and spread that out over five years, that's only $20 per person per year. That is a small price to pay for the countless benefits that public lands provide. As you know, the citizens of Manatee County recently voted to raise their own military so that they can have a dedicated fund for land preservation. If we're going to be successful in our efforts to protect the last remaining natural areas of Pinellas County, we need to take a look at what Manatee County did and move forward with a similar initiative. Finally, in our effort to save the Gladys Douglas Preserve, it is easy to forget that the precious and rare ecosystem that we are all trying to protect would have been lost decades ago if it hadn't been for the foresight and wisdom of one extraordinary woman. For decades, Gladys lovingly tended to and financially supported this land, not for herself, but for her love of nature and the countless voiceless animals that she protected. Ironically, now it seems that her heirs are being punished for all of the good works that this, for all of her good works. This punishment is not intentional, and it is with, or with, excuse me, it's not intentional or with malice, but it must be painful for them nonetheless. With all of this in mind, I urge you to do the prudent and ethical thing, which is to make a fair offer that is comparable to what the developer was offering so that we can put this matter to rest, and all of the parties that are being harmed by this struggle can move forward with their lives. I sincerely thank you for all of your good work that you do to make Pinellas County a wonderful place, and I thank you for the mask mandate. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have three citizens that are remaining to be heard. Our next speaker is Kai Rubach. Kai, if you'd go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Hello, my name is Kai Rubach, K-A-I-R-U-B-A-C-H. I live at 1512 Alamo Court in Dunedin. I'm calling to show support for the Douglas Hackworth property. I think everybody already saw it, but there was an appraisal that came out for about $5.26 million. And we have already seen from donors and the city of Dunedin, $4 million. Now, if we have, I'm not a mathematician, but if we have 5 or 15 million over 10 years, that's 1.5 million per year, which would cover the Douglas Hackworth property and more. So this would be an amazing accomplishment to have this 44 acres of original Florida be this year's kind of a good cap on 2020. I'm, anyway, just calling to support the Douglas Hackworth property, and thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have two remaining speakers. Our next speaker is Kim Bagay. Kim, if you'd go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the board. Kim, can you hear me? Kim? Madam Chair, it seems that Kim might be having some technical difficulty. We're going to go to our next speaker, Lita Benduhn. Lita, if you'll go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Yes, my name is Lita Benduhn, B-E-N-D-U-H-N. I live at 552 Chicago Avenue in Dunedin, Florida. I am calling in about all the land preservation. I have been a part of the activism on the side of preserving the Douglas Hackworth property. And, you know, when it comes down to money, I think we as people, as human beings in general, need to ask ourselves, where are we going to be? Years. Want to be surrounded by concrete. We're losing everything that we claim to offer people that come here from our land to our wildlife. It's just going the hell in a handbag. And I don't know. We have to step in. There has to be a point in time where money and resources are not the priority. But it's the priority that we preserve the very God-given planet that we live on if we want to keep it beautiful and see it passed on to our children and our grandchildren. So I ask all of you for all of the future endeavors. That was a pretty good plan. I don't know what your name was that spoke last with dividing it up for like 25 bucks. That's a legit, and I think is doable, especially in this county. We have a lot of people with money. It's definitely doable. We just ask for your help on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, there are no other citizens that wish to be heard.
Okay, I guess we lost the other one?
We lost the other one. I just had one final hand go up. Do we want to entertain that?
Just in case it's that person, I guess.
That's the same person.
It is, okay. So we'll go ahead and unmute this one. This one says Jeremy Reynolds. Jeremy, go ahead and unmute and give us your spelling and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Name's Jeremy Reynolds, J-E-R-E-M-Y, R-E-Y-N-O-L-D-S. Address is 973 Cedarwood Avenue. You know, I just want to raise public awareness, use the opportunity to encourage others. I recently enrolled in a local trial for a COVID-19 vaccine. And, you know, I have a 50/50 chance of maybe getting early access to that vaccine. So I encourage all Pinellas residents to help participate in that, to help find a way forward to end this pandemic. I thank the Commission for your continued mask mandate. I look forward to the day we can open the Gladys Douglas Preserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, Kim Bagay. Can we try her one more time? Kim, go ahead and unmute, and you'll have three minutes.
That's weird.
I think she's still having technical difficulty. Madam Chair, there are no other citizens that wish to be heard.
Okay, let's go on to the consent agenda then. Is there anything that needs to be pulled? Yes.
I just have one clarification. On item number 12, the actual resolution is correct, but the staff report states that it's 110,000 per year. It's actually 550,000 per year, a total amount over the five years of $2.75 million.
Okay. All right, I have a motion to approve. Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Flowers. All in favor, please say aye. Or, yeah. Yeah, say aye, yes. Okay. Motion opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Item 20, no. Yes, 20, sorry.
Item number 20 is our local state of emergency. As you're well aware, we have continued to see case counts increase. We've seen our percent positivity go up from down in the 2% or 3% to over seven, as a rolling seven-day average, 7.3%. Our case counts are up around the July numbers. This obviously is not, in staff's recommendation, a time to curtail any of the current ordinances in place. And we ask that you extend the local state of emergency through December 25th, 2020. Dr. Cho is on the line. If he was able to join us, he is in the middle of pushing out the vaccine and working and coordinating that effort. We also have Dr. Jamison here with us. And so I would ask for Dr. Cho to convene a summary and open it up for any additional comments from Dr. Jamison.
Good afternoon, everybody. Starting with some of the trends here with COVID cases in terms of our seven-day case count, that is at 404. It's one of the highest ones we've had since the summer. Our 70% positivity is at 7.3%. In terms of deaths, we're at 957, with 67% coming from long-term care facilities. Looking at the hospital capacity, the capacity and availability by the numbers in beds are stable at this time. However, we are seeing an increase in COVID-occupied hospital beds at 219 as of this morning. We did recently have a working call with the hospitals. We always check in with them every week or every two weeks in our working group. They are starting to have some concerns about staffing if numbers continue to increase. And as we are seeing an increase in the community, we're seeing outbreaks and increased cases in long-term care facilities. And we have seen a few this past week. A little bit of good news, and you've all heard about the COVID vaccine pilot. We were selected, along with Broward County, to be one of the state pilot project administering vaccines to our nursing homes. Here at Department of Health in Pinellas, we're grateful for the opportunity to protect our most vulnerable residents. And I don't think I need to tell this group or the public, but we've had a, we do have a large vulnerable population here, given our median age, given the number of long-term care residents in beds. I've mentioned the deaths being disproportionately affecting those individuals. And I'm hopeful that this vaccine will allow us to turn that corner. So in order to accomplish this, we are partnering with the paramedics as well as the Florida National Guard to administer the vaccines to the staff and residents of those facilities with the vaccine administration beginning tomorrow. Keep in mind, this is a voluntary program. There is no mandate. And we have worked over the last few days with the facilities to obtain consents from the individuals and/or the family members as appropriate. A little background on the vaccine. I'm sure you've seen it in the news. On December 11th, the FDA granted emergency use authorization to the Pfizer BioNTech vaccine. They're currently reviewing another vaccine that's been developed by Moderna. They did conduct a large Phase III study with over 43,000 individuals and found it to be both safe and effective. It is a two-dose vaccine given 21 days apart. And with the two doses, it's found to be 95% effective as well as 94% effective for those older than 65. So very promising. I think I mentioned this in a previous meeting. With those kind of numbers, it makes it one of the most effective vaccines against any disease out there. Now, in terms of side effects, it's more common in those less than 55 years of age, more with the second dose. Some common side effects includes injection site pain, fatigue, headache, muscle pain, chills, joint pain, as well as fever. And I know everyone's hopeful with the vaccine now being available, but it's important to remember that the vaccine will not be widely available for a number of weeks or months down the road. We need to, at this time, double down on our preventative measures, including wearing masks, social distancing for the foreseeable future. masks, social distancing for the foreseeable future. I know there's been a lot of interest in the vaccine, and for the public, I ask for patience. The state is working to provide vaccine down the priority list. It's currently working with community partners on the need to expand vaccination access points. So we have working groups with the hospitals, with EMS, among other partners. And certainly with this vaccine, this is great news. This is life-saving news for some of the most vulnerable population here in Pinellas County. With that, I'll stop there.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Cho, can you just remind us the number of residents we have in the long-term care facilities and the number of those facilities?
Sure. So in terms of the nursing home, this mission is geared towards the nursing homes. We have 68 active facilities at this time. If you combine both the staff and residents, I don't think I have it separated, but it's over 15,000. We were given, in terms of our vaccine allotment, over 10,700, but given the fact that according to national surveys, only about 50 to less than 60% are interested in taking the vaccine at this time, we don't see an issue with the supply at this point.
And that's 10,000, is that 10,000 double doses or 10,000?
No, it's, Commissioner Justice, it's the first dose. So what the federal government, federal government does, as well as the Pfizer, is that once they push out a vaccine to the states, they hold back or keep a track of that, having that mandatory second dose. So they hold that back. So all of that will be part of the first dose.
Oh, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't understand.
So it's over 10,700, and those are all first doses.
First dose, just the one dose?
Yes.
And so we have to wait for the second dose?
Yes, the vaccine is separated to 21 days. There's a little wiggle room. It has to be given within 19 to 23 days.
Wow. And then, can you just tell us that we're not seriously even contemplating this idea of just giving the first dose and spinning the wheel and spreading it out to more people with one dose rather than doing the actual double, two doses as recommended?
No, no, absolutely not. The FDA does recommend, and as well as the advisory group, the two doses. The reason being is it's more effective with the two doses, and there is probably a better longevity for the two doses. However, even with the one dose, the studies did show, and that may be what you're referring to, some effectiveness there. According to that Phase 3 study, even after one dose, it was 82% effective, and it was the two dose that bumped it up to 95% effective. But given longevity, the efficacy, I would not deviate from the two doses.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, that's exactly the question I was going to ask.
Mike, turn your mic on, please.
Maybe I had it on. Anyway, so the question I had is, there seems to be some confusion on this whole talk right now of one dose or two dose. I mean, we had somebody call in a little earlier about this, and there's also confusion between the different manufacturers. I think some manufact, at least I had heard that one of the manufacturers, it was only one dose. So I think it's going to be really important that messaging, I mean, is crystal clear what we're doing. I mean, with this first manufacturer, we are talking two doses, 21 days apart roughly, to be effective. The next manufacturer may only require one dose to be equally effective. So I think it's going to be really important that we get that proper messaging out.
Completely agree with you, Commissioner Eggers, and there is about four or five vaccines currently under development. Keep in mind with the two doses, it has to be by the same manufacturer, so keeping track of that. And to complicate it a little bit is that some is going to be spaced by 21 days, some by 28. And currently, the only one that requires only one dose is the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, and that's currently still in Phase 3 studies.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Dr. Cho and Dr. Jamison, for all of your hard work. So this, it appears as though this vaccine follows some of the stringent timelines that a hepatitis B vaccine would follow as it relates to the timeframe for the separation of doses. So what happens if something goes wrong with the delivery for the second dose? Are they to start over like you do for the hepatitis B vaccine in the three-dose serum?
I'd have to get back to you, Commissioner Flowers. That's a good answer. We would probably refer back to the manufacturers and see if they have that kind of data to see if it misses that window. Are they still able to get that second dose, or do they need to restart that two-dose series that you're sort of referring to there? But I don't, unfortunately, have that answer with me now.
Okay, and for children, for pediatrics, is it the same dose quantity for pediatrics as it is for adults?
In the Pfizer study, they only included to the ages down to 16. So it is approved for 16 and 17-year-olds, but there are currently no indication at this time for those at a younger age. The second vaccine that's being reviewed right now by the FDA, they don't have enough data on those under 18 at this time.
And how are we doing with the refrigeration efforts? I had a chance to speak to the new head of Northside Hospital, Valerie, and she was telling me that they're expecting their refrigeration equipment and whatnot to come in to be able to keep the medicine at the required temperature. So how are we doing at other facilities, once the medicine starts flowing in, other than St. Joseph's in Tampa?
So you're referring to the Pfizer vaccine. That is one of the only ones that requires that ultra-cold freezer. I think it's going to take a lot of logistics and planning, once we have a number of different vaccines out there. In terms of the Pfizer vaccine, it is important, as you alluded to, that we keep, maintain that cold chain. So making sure that it's maintained at certain temperatures, per the manufacturer's sort of guidance. So that cold chain is important. And in terms of planning purposes, if we do are to get more Pfizer vaccine in our community in the near future, we have been working with hospitals, trying to inventory where our locations of the ultra-cold freezers are at this time.
And my last question for today is, for those individuals that showed a propensity to the vaccine when they had high allergy issues, that article came out last week that those individuals that were showing high allergy issues were having adverse reactions, severe adverse reactions to this particular medication from Pfizer. Is there any additional information about something else coming out? There are a lot of people in our community because of high allergies, whether it's to, you know, we have high pollen counts and things of that nature. They're taking EpiPens, and it seems like there's an issue with the medication for people like that. So any updates on that?
Good question, Commissioner Flowers. So, yeah, I am aware that they are looking into those anaphylactoid, is what they're calling reactions, in the United Kingdom. In terms of what the FDA approved, according to their emergency use authorization, the only absolute contrigitation indication is if they have any severe allergic reactions to the components of the vaccine and the vaccine in itself. It is advised strongly to caution, to caution if they do have any of their severe allergies, history of anaphylaxis, those that carry an EpiPen. And for the purposes of our mission, just because we'll be going on to a multiple facilities, we are excluding individuals with anaphylaxis at this time. However, it is not an absolute contrigitation, and once it becomes more widely available, it's a discussion, looking at the risk benefits with their medical providers.
Thank you so much, and again, thank you for the hard work that you've been doing all along this path over many months.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have anybody on the line that would like to speak? Brian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item Number 20, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, there's nobody that wishes to comment?
Okay, I understand Dr. Jamison is here too. Oh, there you are.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioner Flowers, to answer one of your questions, if you missed the second shot, the current recommendation is to get it as soon as possible after the due date, but we'll get more information from that on the manufacturers. And to the allergic reaction, we're ensuring that the paramedics that are out there administering the vaccines are monitoring people for a reaction and have all the equipment they need to treat that reaction on hand.
Thank you.
Wait, 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 wait. Oops. Commissioner Long has a question.
Good afternoon. I asked you to wait because I was hoping that as an emergency-room physician and someone who works for the hospitals as well as for the county, you might be in the position to give us your professional opinion today, based on all the new information. We keep learning, we keep learning, we keep learning about this virus, and about some of the so-called information coming from the folks who don't believe in the seriousness of this issue, and quote, other physicians who do think it's, that we're doing the wrong thing. I've tried to do as much research as I can with the medical community and spoken to the folks that I know are highly educated and respected, and I just haven't found anyone who thinks that we are doing the wrong thing that's in the medical community, working day-to-day. So I'm sorry to be so long-winded, but you get where I'm going.
Sure, I'll do my best to try and answer. So, yeah, I do work in the emergency room. I see patients there on a regular basis, and I certainly see COVID patients there on a regular basis. And it's not fake. I can just tell you that. It's also not the flu. So there are people that are getting very sick from this virus. There have been all along, and there will continue to be until we get the epidemic or the pandemic under control. To answer your other question about sort of people's perceptions and opinions on it, I did hear the other day from an organization that surveyed some of their staff about how they would feel about getting a vaccine. And I know you've heard a lot about vaccine hesitancy among folks who are worried about, you know, is this a new vaccine? Has it come too quickly? I can tell you, the science isn't entirely new. If you've heard of cancer vaccines, this is the same science. And so it is a breakthrough that we have a vaccine this quickly, but it's not entirely unproven or new science. In any case, they surveyed some of their staff members about their willingness to get a vaccine, and I note that they indicated that, I believe they said, almost 99% of their medical staff, meaning physicians, said they would love to get this vaccine right away.
Good to know. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to extend.
Move approval, Madam Chair?
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Flowers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Item 21, Super Bowl LV.
Item number 21 is a tourism promotion agreement with the Tampa Bay Super Bowl Host Committee in support of the next Super Bowl right here in Tampa. And Commissioner, we do have Rob Higgins, Executive Director of the Host Committee, here.
Sure. I know that one of the questions we had last week was, what benefit, if there is reduced attendance at the Super Bowl, what is the, what's the benefit to us to supporting it? So.
I can hit on that. The benefits that we see really for hosting major events such as the Super Bowl are threefold. It's economic impact, it's social impact, and then it's the marketing exposure that we receive as a region. From an economic impact standpoint, certainly, we know based off of everything that goes into the Super Bowl, there will still be economic impact. Can we put our pinpoint exactly what it'll be at this point in time? No, we cannot. But we certainly are continuing to see some hotel bookings. We know once the teams qualify as well, that they'll bring fans as part of it as well. So the econ, from an economic impact standpoint, we're going to continue to monitor it and try to maximize it as best as possible. Social impact-wise, we have unveiled a tremendous program called Forever 55. It's a $2 million joint investment between the NFL, as well as our local community partners, to leave a true lasting legacy in our community. We've unveiled six pillars. There's Pinellas inclusion in all of them. Just for example, today, we unveiled that 55 breakfast carts are going into 55 different schools. One in four kids are hungry in school each day. Out of those 55 carts, 20 of them are located here in Pinellas County, with the remainder in Hillsborough and Pasco as well. Over these next 55 days, it's going to feel, it's not 55 days until Super Bowl 55, it's going to feel like 55 days of Super Bowl 55 because of the social impact. And then from a marketing exposure standpoint, this is really the world's biggest event, especially from a single-day perspective. But we forged relationships with the broadcast networks. There's a lot of media that are going to be coming as part of it, and we've created this fantastic partnership with Visit St. Pete Clearwater to leverage the marketing exposure to make sure that our hometown shines on the biggest and brightest of stages. So certainly, from an economic standpoint, we're going to see how it unfolds. We are totally confident 100% in the social impact, as well as the marketing exposure with all eyes being on our region come February 7.
Thank you. Questions while we have them here? Yes, Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here today. Do we know now, or do we know when we'll know what the allowable attendance will be?
We were fortunate, we had Commissioner Goodell here on Sunday for the Bucks game, and we got a chance to visit with him then, as well as yesterday, a little bit as well. And certainly, they want to make sure that the NFL, in conjunction with local stakeholders, like the stadium and local public health officials, are continuing to monitor what the data dictates in terms of what the capacity could be. Right now, about half their venues have fans, the Bucks being one of them. The Bucks, over this time of the season, have incrementally increased towards the beginning of the season. They had one number, and then because of the data, the way it dictated, it could then raise. So, no, we can't put a pin in the ground as to what the capacity will be. Certainly, they're interested in it's having as many fans as they can safely have, and it's something that is an ongoing conversation with the NFL and with all the key stakeholders to make sure that, again, anything that's done is done in a very safe manner.
And then, and all the other parts, I think, you know, are of some value. The marketing is really what this fund is supposed to be for. And so, at the end of the day, after the game is over, will we be able to look back at the tape and go, on the cutaways from coming back from commercial, there were, I don't know, 30 cutaways, and we had 10 in Pinellas County? Or, and that, will that dictate the second part of the financial arrangement, that kind of after-report kind of thing? Or is that looked at, or how is that taken into account?
We always measure the media value of it, and we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to promote the region. So based off, we basically have created a list of assets in conjunction with our great partners at Visit St. Pete Clearwater to maximize that exposure best as possible, to make sure that we're meeting and exceeding expectation in that. I think a lot of people don't realize there's a lot of strategy when it comes to building relationships with the media that'll be here, building relationship with the networks to, so that they have a great education on all that our community has to offer, so we can tell that story. It's a huge opportunity, having not hosted in 12 years, to tell the story of how far we've come as a region and how far we're going in the future. So our plan is to leverage that as best as possible and make sure that there's tremendous ROI every step of the way as part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Eggers?
Yeah, again, thank you for being here. And just, I think, just tagging on a little bit to that question, which is, you've talked a little bit about the value of the $1 million that we're providing as it relates to how many seats they're going to be allowing, and therefore, how many people will be coming down, which is still a question mark, obviously. And so I just, you know, the other piece is, as we look forward to, you know, the marketing exposure side, and you look at the different contributors, there's others that have contributed more. So from our standpoint, you know, being in that $1 million range, it's important to us to still get that exposure. So, you know, from the perspective of, you know, telling the story about the Tampa Bay area, Pinellas County has a story to be told as well. And I just, what concerns me a little bit is where we're going to end up falling in that equation. So maybe you could talk a little bit about that.
Sure, yeah. In terms of the investment level, certainly, there's $5 million that are coming from Hillsborough County entities, whether it's the Hillsborough County Terrace Development Council, whether it's Visit Tampa Bay, or the Tampa Bay Sports Commission. Certainly, that's a significant investment, but at the same time, I would tell you, the strength of our region is the region. And certainly, they're getting some benefits, like actually having the game itself in Hillsborough County that would merit an increased investment as part of it. And certainly, there's increased expenses as part of it there that offset that. And certainly, there's increased expenses as part of it there that offset that. But we're very cognizant that, you know, it's really the entire region that makes the place so special. And so we want it to be very equitable. We want everybody to have tremendous ROI as part of it and receive great marketing exposure. There's an incredible story to tell here, and I could promise you, we're going to do our best to tell it in a very equitable type of way, with taking into account, obviously, from an investment standpoint, this is a million dollars, is a significant investment, and we're truly appreciative of it.
Yeah, well, I'm glad you, I'm glad the direction that you went there. And we do have a story to tell about this region, which includes Hillsborough County and Pasco County and Pinellas County, et cetera. So there's a lot of things that are good, that are going on, and I would think you would be remiss not to tell the whole story. So if we're going to get people back here, it's going to be because of all of the assets, as you say, that we have here. And a lot of them are beaches, our parks, our, you know, the different museums and all of those kinds of things that we have here. Hillsborough has them, they have the ports, they have a lot of things as well. So there's a complete story to tell. That's what I would hope that we see, from my perspective.
Commissioner, we wouldn't have the Super Bowl coming here if we didn't have both counties as strong as they are. We don't have the hotel product to do it without Pinellas County. We don't have the amenities like the beaches to do it. We don't have the event venues, and we don't have the people. You know, there's a ton of Pinellas folks that are involved as part of our community ambassador program. There's a ton of businesses that are Pinellas businesses, part of our Business Connect Initiative, which is minority-owned, female-owned, LGBTQ-owned, and veteran-owned businesses that we're playing matchmaker with, the NFL, to help with contract opportunities. So we're looking at it as, in a very regional approach, that's for sure.
Yeah, well, thank you for that, and thank you for reassuring us a little bit on that front. And also, thank you for being very aware of the issues that we have around Super Bowls with regards to some of the unsavory things that go on. And I really appreciate the leadership of the committee in addressing the human trafficking element. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually had a question either for Barry or Steve. The funding is not currently in this year's budget, so I wanted to see where we were moving it around from. And then also making, I was assuming it's coming out of the 60% for operations and marketing portion of the budget.
That's correct. For the public, go ahead, Steve. Thanks, Nick.
Commissioner, it'll be coming out of the 60% portion, it's coming directly out of our budget. So we are taking that money that's already in there and then reassigning it to Super Bowl.
Okay. Thank you.
And for the, for members of the public, the Tourism Development Council funds are separate. It's not part of the general fund. They can only be used for marketing and promotions like this.
Yes, thank you. And fortunately, they've been quite conservative in their spending this year so far, so we do have that money in the budget, in their budget. Anything else? Questions for Steve or Rob? Okay, thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion then.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
We have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Flowers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner, do we check for, I'm sorry, I missed the public comment. Did we hear not public?
You're right. You're right, sorry.
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item Number 21, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone.
Thank you, invisible Don.
And Madam Chair, it looks like you're clear. There's nobody that wishes to comment.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All righty, item 22.
This is our local arts funding agreement with Creative Pinellas that provides services throughout the county for, and it's $718,000 divided up between the Tourist Development Tax Fund, General Fund, and Transportation Trust Fund.
Commissioner Seal, move approval? Do I have a second? Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Seal, second from Commissioner Peters. Do we have anybody that would like to speak to this issue?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item 22, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, there's nobody that wishes to comment.
Okay. All right then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item 23.
This is a ad verum tax exemption. It's a performance agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Jabil Incorporated. This is for their expansion project, for their facility that they've, that they're currently working on. $11.7 million investment into Phase One.
Barry, at the workshop, I asked you to maybe come forward and let us know, I mean, we're giving an exemption here, but there's an awful lot of property taxes, et cetera, tangible taxes that they're actually contributing. And this is an incremental piece based on this latest investment. So talk a little bit about that perspective, so that we can understand the full impact that this company has on the area.
It's a great question, Commissioner. It was raised, and Mike Midell, our Director of Economic Development, is here to provide that information.
Great. Good afternoon, Mike Midell, Economic Development Director. Yes, Jabil, the entire tax bill for all of the properties owned by Jabil in Pinellas County comes to $912,597 per year. $360,000 of that goes to the county, the countywide mileage rate, and the remainder goes to the schools in the city of St. Petersburg and other jurisdictions. They have a total of 1,800, actually, their employment exceeds 1,800 workers, and the average wage exceeds $70,000 per worker, for a total of $126 million payroll every year going into our economy. The $11.7 million is already put into our economy in construction fees, and we built the, they renovated entirely the old Tampa Bay Innovation Research Center, and that is open and operating today with 86 retained employees and 12 new employees. And they are required to maintain that. We'll take an annual report every year. We'll track the individuals by job title and hire date, and we will know that those jobs were retained throughout the tenure process.
So of the $912,000 tax bill that we're getting, this would be, this would have been and will be in 10 years, right? $53,000 additional dollars.
We will continue to receive $22,000 from the, for this facility. So for the Phase One facility, that was the base rate, and it's only the increment that is not being accepted for 10 years. And that would be $53,000, the estimate anyway, based on the-
And that tax bill that you were talking about, that includes tangible taxes as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
In fact, that is a large portion of the taxes, is their equipment.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate that perspective. Madam Chair.
Mr. Flowers? Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I was speaking with Jewel because of my question at our workshop, which was, how do we know that the individuals who receive jobs as a result of this tax credit actually remain employed, if in fact, there were layoffs? So I really love the fact that you just shared they are tracked by job title and position. So you'll know. And that would be the trigger for us to pull back on any type of tax credits that we would give them. So thank you so very much, you answered my question in full. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have any input from the public?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item Number 23, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone. And Madam Chair, there's nobody that wishes to comment on this item.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Flowers, second from Commissioner Peters. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six one. Item 24.
This is a grant award from the U.S. Department of Justice for a DNA capacity enhancement program. In essence, this provides for one and a half positions over at the forensic lab, and this is the ninth year of the grant.
Motions? Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Peters. Do we have any input from the public?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item 24, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone. And Madam Chair, there's nobody that wishes to comment.
Thank you, Brian. In that case, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item 25.
Item number 25 is actually, it's a very exciting program. This is a grant award from the U.S. Department of Justice for a comprehensive opioid stimulant and substance abuse site-based program. This provides $1.2 million to expand our co-occurring assistance, recovery, and empowerment teams to provide immediate intervention on, at on-scene overdoses when first responders are involved. Human Services will partner with our local law enforcement agencies, emergency medical services, and our opioid task force to provide onsite intervention and expedite access to treatment facilities. Again, this is over a three-year period with no cost-sharing requirement, and our Human Services team worked hard on making sure to get this grant award.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Input from the public, Brian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item Number 25, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, it appears we do have one member of the public that wishes to comment. This is Glenn Reigh. Glenn, go ahead and unmute, and you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Hello, Board, again. I just wanted to point out one fact. My history, my background is, I'm a 35-year-old retired ER nurse. And I recently did a study about five years ago on opioid addictions. And I found that the manufacturer of Narcan, which is used to combat in the field opioid addictions, opioid, excuse me, opioid overdoses, their price went up 100% per year for 10 years straight. So I would just caution you that when you're doing your budgetary studies, that you kind of keep that in mind and work that out with the pharmaceutical companies. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That's distressing. All right, I will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Flowers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item 26.
This is a Affordable Housing Advisory Committee Report on State Housing Initiatives Partnership Program for Annual Report.
Is somebody going to-
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Okay, I thought somebody was going to give a report. All right.
Oh, well, we do have Sherri Harris here can provide a report if you have questions.
That's all right. Do we have any questions, or do we want to hear a brief report? I think we know what the incentives are. Did I have a second? I missed it. Okay, thank you. Do we have any comments?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item 26, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, there's nobody that wishes to comment.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Flowers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item 27.
This is the City of St. Petersburg in-town CRA 15-year review. Since the inter-local agreement was originally approved, there's been five amendments. The staff has looked at the city's submitted 15-year report stating that they provide substantial evidence that it meets the review criteria pursuant to our county code, and that the TIF contributions have been effectively utilized for the planned projects and initiatives.
All right, do we have any questions about this? Commissioner Seal.
My question is, on the very last page of the text, the last paragraph says the city anticipates issuing debt for the new projects, and that our $108.1 million maximum contribution may be amended to adjust for the county's pro-rata share of the actual cost of issuance and debt service. Is that required in the legal agreement, or is that something that would have to come back to us for approval?
So is this the last page of the inter-local, or of the-
No, of the agenda.
Oh, the agenda item.
Item.
I'm sure I'm reading that correctly.
I'll let Evan catch up with finding the text there, but our inter-local agreement does require the city to get approval from the county before issuing any debt that's secured with county TIF.
So they would have to come to us for approval?
The inter-local requires them to, yes.
Okay. I guess I just kind of want to state this at this point, that I think this is the maximum amount that we have negotiated this over time. We went up substantially to help with the new peer, but I think we need to hold the line at this point. So I'm just trying to send the message at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Eggers.
Thank you for bringing that up. I definitely have an issue with that, because we were targeting that $108 million. The way I'm reading this is if they add additional, if they leverage that money and add additional debt, that our, our part can go up. Is that-
No.
I want to make sure I'm clear. $108,000, $108 million maximum contribution may be amended to adjust to our pro-rata share of actual cost of, of an issuance and debt service? I just want to make sure I-
But if there was an amendment to agree to something in that, so they'd have to come back to us to make any type of amendment that would change that amount.
All right.
So my understanding is that that is a cap maximum, and so-
Unless they come back here.
Correct. So essentially, you have two. We have the step-down of the TIF contribution over time, which is built into the inter-local. And I did want to mention that in my memo in the, under the agenda item, I said it was going to 50% in 2021. It's actually 2023 per the inter-local agreement, so I wanted to make that correction clear. But once it goes down to 50%, we will continue to pay that until such time that we would hit that cap, if we do at all, depending on property values moving forward.
And that is the way the inter-local, the inter-local agreement is not part of your agenda here today, because you're not taking any action on that agreement. That agreement is, it's, you know, it is an agreement between the two parties. And again, it's not part of your agenda package, but the way it reads is, we are either going to contribute at the rates that you see here with the corrected year that Evan just gave you as to the 50%. So we will either continue contributing at that amount until, I think it's 2032, or until we hit that cap. And I hate to call on Bill out of the blue, but Bill could probably tell us how we came up with that $108.1 million cap. But that was an agreement that was inserted into the last inter-local that this board approved. So it's either you make the contribution at these rates through 2032, or you reach $108.1. Whichever occurs first is when we're going to stop. And Bill might be able to say, well, I just don't recall where the $108.1 came from, but I believe that was based on some projections.
Actually, what I want to do is clarify that the $108.1 million includes an estimation of cost per debt issuance. Yes. So part of the inter-local dictates that they shall come back and recalibrate what the actual final amount is, based on the actual cost of issuance of that debt. So that's built in already. So unless the debt ends up costing more, which at this point looks like it's unlikely, it's much more likely that the debt's going to be less, that number may actually come down somewhat.
Okay. So that is our cap? All in?
If-
Unless they came back and asked for more.
If circumstances change substantially in the financial markets, and they issue a debt after that happens, and the debt costs more than what was estimated, then there's a provision that allows them to come back, A, as Jewel said, that it has to be approved by you as a board for them to issue the debt in the first place, and we would potentially recalibrate the $108.1 million up slightly if necessary. But the same thing works the other way. So if they come back, they get debt approved by you, and issue the debt, and it costs less than we had estimated at the time, which was a couple of years ago, when the markets were at a different place, then the $108.1 million will actually come down to a lower number.
Okay. And that would be good. Okay. Yes, Mr. Wong. Yes, Commissioner Long?
I knew your name.
So now I'm confused, and maybe it's just my misunderstanding, but when we initially approved that agreement a while ago, it was explained to me that our part was going And now I'm hearing that there's a potential it might go up. What am I missing, Commissioner Seal?
Overall, it did go up, but it didn't go up as much as we anticipated and approved a while ago. So it's about twelve, almost thirteen million more than the original 95 million-plus. So originally, I think the request was like for 20 million, I believe. Anyway, because of the improved values of the real estate and the TIF, they went back and they renegotiated the sunset provision sooner than later and the step-down amount. And so I think what Bill's trying to say is that we're all in at 108.1 million with debt, but if the debt costs are higher than what we anticipated, then they'll have to come back and ask us for more money. That's the bottom.
Yes, that's correct. They would have to come back to you to issue the debt in the first place.
Correct.
And to ask for more money in addition to coming back in the first place for the debt.
But if the debt service is lower, then it would come back and benefit us. That's what he's trying to say.
So can I ask a follow-up, though? Given what we are anticipating in terms of the decrease in our revenue potentially by the end of 2021, what kind of an effect is that going to have on us?
It will.
Well, that's?
That was the danger of doing the CRAs and increasing the amounts, so.
Commissioner Justice?
We're, as of today, you know, through the current fiscal year, we are ahead of schedule in reaching that 108.1 million dollars since we signed that inter-local because the values in the CRA have increased much higher than what was estimated when we put that schedule of, you know, when the 108.1 million will be paid out together. So the assumption, I believe, was 7% a year, and we've been upwards of 10% in that district every year since we signed that inter-local.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And correct my memory if I'm wrong, but it was also not done as a silo one looking at this simple or this individual CRA, but as part of negotiations when we created the new CRA. And part of that new CRA was that we were going to start closing down all the others because there was so, there was multiple CRAs in there, and it was like, all right, we're going to do the one big one, but we need to kind of sunset all these others. We're not going to renew it every 15 years again and again and again. And the values had increased so dramatically in that area that it kind of came to its natural end.
To that point, South St. Pete's contribution is 85% and has been since the outset, where normally the historical precedent has been 95%. And that was part of that negotiation, so that's, that's great context.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments?
I'll move approval.
Okay. Anybody else like to reluctantly second that? All right, thank you. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Seal, second from Commissioner Justice. Do we have any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda item twenty-seven, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, there's nobody that wishes to comment.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Please. Barry, a couple of times now when we've had issues with regard to CRAs, we've talked about coming, you with staff coming, is that going to be at our strategic planning meeting, or when are we going to be able to talk about the whole big picture and how we really stand, given the changing dynamics in the world right now? It all makes me very anxious.
Well, Evan is up there, and is that the January 7th work session?
Yes.
Okay, so it's right around the corner. But this is our fifth?
All right.
Evan, Evan has been working and his, and their team have been working very, very hard to look at best practices around the country. How do we manage them? How do we evaluate CRAs? And so we're going to bring, bring in that to our work session with you, and then we're going to take that and then discuss this with the city managers and our, and our, and our partners. And so it's right around the corner. We're going to be discussing it.
Yeah, and if you don't mind me saying, please keep in mind when you have, we have that conversation, I certainly have heard scuttlebutt from more than a couple of places of folks wanting to come to us with a new one, or two, or three.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, there are.
We're aware of a couple.
But for the ones that I'm aware of, I think out of all the things that they would clarify for an area that's blighted and needs investment, and at least one that I'm aware of, but, but we're certainly bringing in that, but it'll be right around the corner, January 7th.
Thank you. At the same time, is it possible for us to give you, for you to give us a little chart of the millage rates of all the different cities? I think that's important to keep in mind as we go forward considering these CRA requests, don't you?
We certainly can, and he's got a great chart that shows you the CRA. We'll, we'll add the, we'll add the millage rates, but remember, we've got them all to where they're, they're equal now. And he's got a great chart that shows you the time periods and when they, renewal periods are and when they expire, all as part of that presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Evan.
I think that's a good point. And only tangentially related, we haven't heard in a long time from Mike Twitty about what he's projecting or is going to happen? Does he have a different idea than he had?
During the budget, I, me personally, I haven't talked to him about it.
Nine months ago. I've talked to him. It would be interesting to have him come here and talk to us.
I would like to hear it, actually.
We can cer, we can certainly do that. He's, and I know he's talked to many of our municipal counterparts. He's trying to help everybody out, and he gets around amazingly to a lot of people as I talk to him, but I'm sure he'd be happy to come back and, as he has updated projections.
It's been a long, it's been nine months, I bet.
Well, the valuation should be as of January 1st.
Right.
So typically, we start hearing from him maybe in March about what that anticipated value's going to be, but he may have a clue at this point to let us know. Yeah, I think he would know a bit about what he's doing since they do the evaluations.
I just want to finish my thought. If we're going to have Mike come and talk to us, and he's going to talk about the valuations, can he also talk about the new flood assessment formulas that they're coming up with in Congress? Because it all kind of goes together at some point in time, in terms of what we need to be thinking about.
I'm not sure if they're ready for, to have that conversation, but we can, I'm see Della writing it down, so I'll definitely follow up.
Thank you.
Well, whatever he thinks is a good time to give us.
Okay.
To be able to answer some questions. Okay. Bill, did you have something else? Are you just waiting for questions?
OMB has been in touch with Mr. Twitty. As Barry said, he's been great to work with, with us as well as the rest of the community and sharing what his observations are and what his current thoughts are. Right now, we're in the middle of the budget development process as far as the forecast goes, and the forecast will be coming to you in February, and that forecast will incorporate his latest thoughts and guidance. And it's moderated a little bit, it's a little bit better than it was back when we built the budget, but there's still some trepidation around it.
Right. That's what I'm worried about. Okay, yes, Commissioner?
In our, in our presentation in January on, on these CRAs, we, we created the three different, or different levels of CRA.
Yes.
And it's always struck me that, you know, we're at 75% in downtown St. Petersburg, really of all places. It just seems to beg for 50% at most. Clearly, they're, they're contributing as much in their own tax dollars, and we can't contribute more. So they're diverting monies that could be going elsewhere also.
Yes.
Which, again, when you, when we, I just heard the comment that South St. Petersburg's at 85% when, you know, it seems reasonable to be at 95%. And we, obviously, that was part of a negotiation, but I, I think that kind of conversation is, is that on the docket as well to have that general conversation about these CRA percent levels and?
Yes, sir. We have, so you're speaking of the three types, the CRA types, where we, when somebody comes in, we're doing a scoring and evaluation process, and they're seeing is just the fact that there's not a lot of clarity if they don't meet those criteria, what we are supposed to do in response. We all reserve the right to make a recommendation or something like that, but again, we, we've lacked clarity. So one of the things we're trying to do is, when we come back in January and we work on this policy update, is to develop a methodology that would give us some clarity and give you some clarity if we get to that point at a midpoint, and we're like, you know, they haven't done what they said they were going to do, or they didn't meet these criteria, and based on our transparent methodology, this is what we would recommend to you as far as a reduction or not. And so that's also something, we're really trying to create a logical approach to all of this so that we're not stuck here saying, well, I don't know what should it be or should it not be? So those are two main pieces.
Yeah, I was just looking at this, the paragraph that says that the county believes the city submitted fifteen-year report provides substantial evidence that it meets the review criteria pursuant to county code. So, I mean, I think that, I think your point about that mid-year review is so important because, look, you know, you come to us with a, I mean, a very healthy community, and this doesn't, you know, 75%, I think that's the conversation.
Right.
It should be at 50, 75, should it even continue to exist? So we need to, I think, to, I guess, pin that down a little bit, but because, because there's some really clear mixed messaging, I think, if we're not, if we're not careful, and especially with respect to expectations.
Absolutely.
Now, what we're trying to do is work with the commissioners and then take that out and talk to our community partners to where it, you know, it's, if you come up at the end of 15 years and all of a sudden we make an arbitrary decision, and they come back to you and wait a minute, you didn't do it over here, right? And so we're, we're trying to have a meaningful conversation about how we do that review well ahead of when we actually do a review.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Seal, second from Commissioner Justice. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries six one. Item twenty-eight.
This is a change order number one to a contract with United Healthcare Services. This is to add our short-term, let's see, wait a minute, lost track. Yeah, our long-term disability services. This was just inadvertently left off of the contract. This adds that back in. It's always been part of it. It's always been part of our budget.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. Okay, sorry. It's the masks. Make it hard. All right, do we have any questions? Questions or comments from the public, Brian?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda item number twenty-eight, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, there's nobody that wishes to comment.
Okay. Well, we have a motion from Commissioner Justice, second from Commissioner Eggers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Madam Attorney?
Under item number twenty-nine, I'm requesting that you approve the public official bonds as noted in the agenda. As you are all aware, the four of you who were recently elected, we did procure bonds for you as we do at the outset of every new term, as well as for the four constitutional officers that are listed here. The supervisor of elections is not required to have a bond. And just a reminder, the bond amounts are set by you. We haven't taken a look at them in quite some time, but there is a resolution that establishes these bond amounts, and the county commission is required by law to approve the bonds. So that is the action before you.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Do we have any comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda item number twenty-nine, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, there's nobody that wishes to comment.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Peters, second from Commissioner Justice. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item twenty-nine, 2030, I'm sorry.
I have no, I have nothing to report.
Okay. Mr. Administrator?
Four items to report on. One, last year during budget time, we talked about our growth management strategies and working with our fire EMS regarding the data and the criteria we use to evaluate that. We have scheduled that meeting with both the cities that have fire departments and their chiefs, and also with independent fire districts. That meeting is scheduled for January the 5th. So we'll begin those discussions, have those discussions well ahead of budget, you know, this year. So make you aware of that. The other one has been talking about regional economic development, and this has been kind of a nuance for us because we've talked about things that we could do as a region. And, and as part of those discussions, it really kind of came to light that we don't necessarily have a strategy on how do we represent and work with our cities locally and internally. And so I've asked Mike to coordinate a discussion with various cities that have a large economic development presence to, to have discussions around, are there things that we should, we could do more in coordinating local economic development efforts, being more inclusive into that decision-making process, and especially in terms of strategies? And the reason for that is we've been asked to join larger regional entities, but I think it's really going to take us to get out of the pandemic to where we can meet and talk about, you know, follow-on strategies. It'd be nice to have our own act and order to join those efforts. And the way I say that is when they were originally talking about that, they're, for instance, they would say that, okay, the county and St. Petersburg, you know, the mayor of St. Petersburg be part of this regional effort. Well, that's not necessarily inclusive of Osmar, Pinellas Park, Clearwater, but yeah, you can't have 40 people on a council. So I just think we, we want to have more input into our local strategy, and so I'm going to be setting up a couple of meetings with various cities to try to provide that input as we develop a larger, more broad regional strategies. That's something in the regional strategy we'll be talking about at our strategic planning coming up here in January. Which leads me to the next item is to start thinking about strategic planning. In addition to, you know, working out of the pandemic, we would, you know, also like to start thinking about other goals and objectives that we have, and that, that planning meeting will be scheduled for January the 21st. And then finally, you received a memo on safe harbor. We've, I've asked Lourdes Benedict to coordinate that effort, working with Homeless Leadership Council in terms of a, bringing people together to be able to have that conversation as Largo requested. We've discussed this ever since I've been here, and I'm sure many years before, and so she'll be coordinating that effort in the future. That's all I have to report.
Okay. We have a number of appointments to make here, first one being Feather Sound Community Services District reappointments. I forget how we handle those. Does somebody just make a motion to reappoint these people? Okay. All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Peters, second from Commissioner Justice. Do we have any public comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda item number thirty-two, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, there's nobody that wishes to comment.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item thirty-three, Gulf Consortium.
Move approval.
We have?
Second.
I don't know who that second was.
Long.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Justice, second from Commissioner Long. Do we have any comments from the public, Brian?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda item number thirty-three, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, there's nobody that wishes to comment.
Okay. We have a motion from Justice, second from Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item thirty-four, Lealman Community Development District. So how? With, like, your four people? Right, there are seven candidates and four slots. If we look on the worksheet.
Select four out of the six.
Yeah, just. Yeah, I just want to make sure that the clerk is ready to hear this.
Yeah, I can't get my ballot to come up.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I do want to speak on behalf of Jeremy Heath. He's been very active in Lealman, has been there many, 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 I think his whole life he's been there. And in the Lealman Community Meeting that happened last week, he was one of the few residents that really kind of kept us cool and listened and really brought common sense and solutions. You know, I, I think, he wasn't emotional. I think he would be a really good one to, to include on that, that board. I, I think he'd really bring in, be an asset. And I really think he'd emerge as a leader on that board. So I just want to strongly advocate for him.
Okay, thank you. We also did get several endorsements of his candidacy in emails. How do you want us to do this, Mr. Clerk?
I can just, you know, I can call your name and you can tell me your four selections.
Okay. Great. Just wanted to make sure you were ready.
That's fine.
All right, go ahead.
Who's ready to go? Commissioner Long, are you ready?
No, because I just, I, I was having a hard time getting my ballot up.
Commissioner Justice?
Yes, sir. McCoy, Orr, Segabon, O'Hara.
Thank you. Commissioner Eggers?
McCoy, Orr, Segabon, and Heath.
I'm sorry. Mr. Clerk, I'd like to change. I had the marking here and I didn't have change from O'Hara to Rogers.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chair Gerard?
McCoy, Heath, Segabon, and Rogers.
Okay. Commissioner Seal?
Yes, McCoy, Orr, Segabon, and Heath.
Commissioner Peters?
McCoy, Heath, Orr, and Segabon.
Commissioner Flowers. And welcome, Commissioner Flowers. It's our first time together at the meeting.
Yes, good to see you.
Good to see you, ma'am.
Yes. McCoy, Heath, Segabon, and Rogers, please.
Thank you. And Commissioner Long?
McCoy, Heath, Orr, and Rogers.
Seven, six.
Good idea, yeah.
Five.
Okay. I realize that I didn't ask for public comment on that. So while we're waiting, can we ask for public comment on all the appointments? If you have any public comment, please let us know right now about appointments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda item 34, the appointments to the Lealman Community Redevelopment Area Advisory Committee, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting.
Do you mean through item 38?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Through 38. Well, public comment through 38, yeah.
Okay. So at this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda item 32 through 38, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting.
We have somebody in the room.
Go ahead, Madam Chair.
Mr. David Ballard Geddes Jr.?
Quickly, David Ballard Geddes Jr. I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. For years, this Lealman community's been a subject of, of conversation with the Board of County Commissioners. And I've had trouble putting together exactly what the Lealman community is in regards to voting for board members, this board voting for that board. Is this Lealman community somewhat of a government, an emerging government within a government? Thank you.
Just to answer your question while we're waiting, we, the Lealman community is a, is a redevelopment district that we created. It's all unincorporated area roughly between Pinellas Park and St. Petersburg. And it's all unincorporated county. So there is no, we are the government.
Yeah, it's an advisory board.
So, yeah, what we're appointing is an advisory board to the, for the redevelopment district. Thanks.
And Madam Chair, there's nobody else.
I'm sorry. Chair Gerard, Marsha McCoy received seven votes, Jeremy Heath received six votes, Rick Orr received five votes, John Rogers received four votes, and Oscar Segabon received six votes. Therefore, the four that are elected are Marsha McCoy, Jeremy Heath, Rick Orr, and Oscar Segabon.
Okay. And we want to thank you all very much for volunteering. Please keep your name in there if you're still interested. We do get regular openings on that board. Okay. Item 35. And I believe we'll be handling the next two in that, if you want to get ready for roll, the next two will be roll call votes. Okay. Item 35 is Pinellas County Historic Preservation Board. We have, how many?
Madam Chair, this is kind of awkward because we, there's three vacancies, but only two applied. So you, you can do this through a motion if you wish, just to accept these two.
Yeah, that's great. I'm sorry. I just looked at that. Okay.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Peters, second from Commissioner Justice. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And Madam Chair, both of these gentlemen currently serve and do an outstanding job.
And thank you once again for volunteering. Item 36, 36 is Pinellas Park Water Management District. That has three members that have been the same for, since the beginning of time. And I, we probably have, oh my God, we have an, we have another one who's not eligible, so never mind. Okay. I will entertain a motion to reappoint Mr. Farrell. Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Seal, second from Commissioner Eggers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I thought we were going to stop doing that one.
No, we appoint, we appoint someone on it. It was our.
Are we still attending those meetings?
I attended a couple at the beginning prior to the.
Oh, right.
Public hearing. They still are meeting in that boardroom. And I was not.
Boardroom, okay.
I was not going in.
All right. Item 37, Unified Personnel Board. And there is no ballot. This is reappointing. Okay. Where are we?
Madam Chair, if I can just clarify, on your notes, it states that this would expire in, on 2023. It's actually at December 31, 2022.
Oh.
To your.
Oh, right, two years, right. Gotcha. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Jeff Kronchnabel Beck. Approval. Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Peters. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kronchnabel. Item 38, Youth Advisory Board.
Madam Chair, these students are now being added to the committee because several have dropped off as a result of COVID and they're not coming in personally. So, so we're replacing them with those that are on the waiting list.
Okay, great. Was that a motion? Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Peters, second from Commissioner Eggers. Any questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven, zero. Item 39. Oh, that's us. Never mind. Any complaints? This is assignment to 2021 committees and boards. Okay.
Move approval of the.
Speak now or forever hold your peace. Okay. Do I have a, do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, I motioned.
So we actually vote on the. Okay. But I thought they were, I thought they were chair appointments, but that, never mind. All in favor, please say, I didn't ask for a, I don't think we need to vote on that. We've never voted on these before, have we? We have?
We've, we've kind of confirmed.
We have sporadically voted on these?
No, we've, we've always voted, but it was confirming because I think there is still some confusion over, some of the committee assignments are from the county commission and some of them are chair appointments. And it's, and I don't know that we have it spelled out in each committee, but some are specifically for the chair and some are specifically for the entire board and some are not completely spelled out at all.
I don't think I ever knew that. So, okay. Just one of those things. Do we have any public comment on this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda item number 39, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, there's nobody that wishes to comment.
Think of it as advise and consent.
Right. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Eggers, second from Commissioner Flowers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven, zero. All right. Before our break, we have County Commission New Business Items. Anybody have any?
I do.
Oh, yes, you do. Commissioner Long?
Well, first of all, I think I shared with all of you a copy of the resolution on human trafficking. And you may remember that a couple of meetings ago, we did have a presentation by one of our staff people who told us about the work that had been going on within our county government. But the, but the issue that I had was there was no action plan for the County Commission. And because Commissioner Seal wasn't here that day, and I know she has an interest in this as well.
Yeah, so we can vote on it.
I asked if we could bring it up at a different time. Now, I understand that it's on our agenda for January. But that said, I was hoping that we could have a consensus this afternoon in a brief discussion. I just got a message from Mrs. Hibbard that she would like to call in and just briefly speak to the issue, but she can't find the number to call in. And I'm embarrassed to say I couldn't remember what it was. And I don't know if you would allow her to speak or not. But I do think it's a very important issue. I know we have the Super Bowl coming up in February. And while we haven't taken any action as a board, Commissioner Eggers spoke that he would be in favor of us doing something. I don't know what that something looks like, but I was somewhat impressed by the ordinance that Hillsborough County recently, or I guess now it was about a year ago, enacted. And I understand Pinellas County has as well. And I have had several conversations with Teresa Hibbard about doing this kind of thing. She was incredibly interested in it. And so is the Clearwater Downtown Partnership. You may have seen in the paper or on the, on the, online, I think it was last week, or maybe two weeks ago, time is passing so quickly, that the city of St. Petersburg recently just put a task force in place to work with this same issue. And I do believe that we sent over to you that ordinance, didn't we, Jewel, some time ago? But then, right about the same time we sent it over to you, we got hit with the pandemic. And so it kind of got pushed to the back burner. But now that we are where we are, it seemed like it would be an appropriate time to try and move it forward in some manner, shape, or form. And I'll just stop talking. And is Brian still on the phone? Can he give me the number so I can give it to her, Brian? Or would you allow her to speak for just a minute or two, Madam Chair?
I would rather have a full discussion of this and what, and some input from, there are quite a laundry list of people that you're asking to be part of this commission. And I'd like to know.
Well, that was just because that's what Hillsborough did. And I didn't really.
Right, I understand. I don't, I don't think we're near taking a vote on anything. And we don't allow public comment when we're not taking a vote. So when the issue comes up and we have something solid that we're going to be voting on, I would love to hear from her, or even in the, in the interim. I'd be glad to have a conversation. But I think, I think there are a lot of questions for me and maybe, I don't know, maybe submit them to bury what the questions are and what, what do we need to think through before we decide to do something like this? I mean, I know the time is short before the Super Bowl, but there already is a group that meets, that includes quite a number of these people. And I'd like to know what they think about creating a whole different entity that's under the County Commission. And, you know, does that divide their efforts or what? So that's all. Yes, Mr. Seal?
Thank you. I actually thank Lourdes and was, for an excellent report. I mean, actually, it appears like we are achieving more than the other counties with our ordinance. And so the staff is to be congratulated for all of the efforts in that regard. And our ordinance is closely modeled to what is in Pasco already. So I would agree with the chairman, chairwoman, that it, in my opinion, we should have a more robust and public discussion in January. If we did do some kind of tasks, I mean, we are already cooperating on the Super Bowl through the regional human trafficking, again, the report from Lourdes. So if we did establish a task force, I would probably recommend making it small and recommend not meeting a lot because we already have staff working on a lot of these issues. So we'll look forward to January to a more robust discussion. But I just wanted to share some of my thoughts at this point. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Eggers?
I, I think having a conversation about this is, is, you know, way past time. We should be doing this conversation. I, I agree that there's a lot of things we need to learn. But if this task force, if this group becomes nothing more than symbolism, it has accomplished a great deal in my mind. Because I really think this is an area that there is so much work that's being done that we're not aware of. And it's, it'd be good to have a general sense of that to give, well, me and others a more comfort that there is this, that we are attacking this issue in our county. But I do think there is something to be said for a county stepping up and saying, we don't want any of this here. We, we're clearly, we don't. But so I think there's, I think there's real value in it. And I, I really hope we do, we do have that conversation. And more importantly, to decide what that group's task is going to be. Because it, it could be very general and symbolic, or it could be task oriented. So I, you know, I just want to, I think that conversation is really important to have. But this topic is so, so, so important to all of us. So yeah, I'm supportive of, of having this conversation. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Great. Well.
And if I may, Madam Chair.
Please.
I hear and I heard at the last, whenever, we had that summary of what had been going on at our last, whatever that was, a couple of weeks ago. But the point is, it appears that there's a lot going on. There's a lot of partnering going on. I hear that Lourdes has been deeply involved in it. And that's the thing that I find troubling because obviously, whatever it is we're doing and we're partnering, I know, just because, as you all know, I have a son and daughter-in-law in law enforcement, that there's a lot going on in the individual law enforcement departments. But the bigger, broader community doesn't necessarily know. And what I, what in my mind, I thought the, the commission might be able to accomplish was something that's near and dear to especially Commissioner Eggers' heart, because I've heard him talk about it over and over and over. And that is ensuring that our citizens have their input heard. And so while, you know, I, I do, I'm, I'm just saying, I think it's a worthy discussion. And I would certainly like to have it in the public arena. So if we can at least do that, I'd be happy for the moment.
I think we can do part of that in the public arena. Having been a part of that task force that meets and has been meeting, that includes law enforcement and all that, I can tell you that they don't want that in the public arena to be discussed. The marketing and communication effort, yes, that's, that's a whole different thing. The marketing and communication effort, yes, that's, that's a whole different thing. One of the things we talked about last time was the fact that the task force is funded rather sporadically by federal funds. And I think I think there's a lot to be said for us getting involved at that level and making sure that it continues from one grant cycle to the next, instead of having to reform every time somebody writes a grant and they get it, because that, that's counterproductive. But there is a lot of really good undercover work going on and a lot of coordination going on between departments and even service providers that should be quiet, but like I said, there's that element that yeah, we can certainly do.
Yeah.
And we can, and we can support the rest of it.
More I'm thinking an educational opportunity. I understand about the sensitivity with the law enforcement folks. But I know because I've heard it spoken of so many times that the FBI office over in Tampa has an incredible spokesperson whose primary job, or at least it used to be, was going out and speaking about this issue and the signs and the things to be looking for that would help us all be able to be more proactive. So anyway, I'm not going to wax on, but you get my drift and I appreciate your taking, letting me take the time this afternoon to just talk about it. So thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to see it on an agenda, Mr. Peters, Chair. Okay, yes, Commissioner Justice.
On a separate topic, I got a message just now that when we appointed
I'm trying to figure that out myself.
The two members of the Historic Preservation Board.
Yeah.
We did the at-large positions.
We didn't do the other three.
And I, and I would make the motion to approve the appointment of John Doctor by Commissioner Peters and David McNamie by Commissioner Gerard to the Historic Preservation Board.
Okay. Okay. And that's, and that takes care of what we, because Whitney said we had five.
That's my understanding. I, it's in the, it's in the agenda memo, but the roster that we voted on was just the two
Right.
The other positions.
Is there a third that we're missing then?
Not that I'm aware of.
I'll just read my text again.
Historic Preservation. It's in the recommended action on the, on the agenda document, but when we looked at the roster, it was for the at-large appointments.
But it says there's five, five positions. Two at-large. And we didn't do an alternate position for the at-large, right? Three, okay.
We just did Mr. Louisi and Mr. Smith.
Do we?
Because those are the two applicants that we had.
So we didn't have an at-large? Or a Okay, let's just appoint the other two. Okay, we had a motion from Justice and I think a second from Peters. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Mr. Clerk will let us know if we're missing somebody. Okay. Anybody else? Yes. Commissioner Seal.
McFerrin.
I wanted to thank Barry for having an extensive conversation with Mr. Waddell and working on the property matter. Secondly, I, this is my last chance to thank Cindy Simmons, who is been with the county for thirty-something years and twenty-two, almost twenty-two years with me. And she'll be retiring effective January 4th of 2021. So she solved a whole lot of problems for Rublada citizens and was always very proactive and kind and patient. And I just want to wish her a happy retirement. And that I'll miss her a lot. But that I also get to welcome a new assistant, which is Jan Tracy. So please
Has quite a bit of experience herself.
With quite a bit of experience with the county.
Yeah.
And so that's it. Thank you.
That's great. And we all wish Cindy a lovely retirement. I did have one other thing. We, last week we talked to, or we had a conference call with the Assistant Secretary of the Navy with Congressman Crist. And he has talked to Congressman Bill O'Racus and they would, they have drafted an op-ed and have asked Commissioner Eggers and I to sign on as the incoming and outgoing chair of the County Commission. And I guess we need your approval to do that. And we've read it and it's, what does it say?
What's the letter say?
Of course I didn't bring it with me. It says that the Army Corps should be flexible enough to let us do this project without having to get 100% signatures. And if they were nice, they would do that. I'll be glad to send it out. I just don't have it. It doesn't say anything offensive. It doesn't say anything more than what we've been saying for months here. But it is from the two congressmen, so that helps, perhaps.
I was going to just say that for the most
You may have it there. I don't
Yeah, for the most part, it does talk about, the first draft wasn't, is, is good, I don't think. In the second draft, it really talks about dealing with the Army Corps and getting them to change the way that they look at these easements, especially when they're not getting any sand at all on this go-around. And so that's the primary focus and that's our effort and we're working hard to do that. And oh, by the way, there is a paragraph that says, but while we continue pressing the Corps to grant our request, homeowners that haven't signed are strongly encouraged to do so. More information on easements can be found at a certain place. It is imperative that Pinellas County Shore Protection Project proceed uninterrupted so that we here in Pinellas can continue to enjoy our beaches, preserve our environment, way of life, and protect our coastal residents from storm surge. That's kind of the last paragraph, but essentially it's saying, we've got to get the Corps to change their ways of doing this. That's our primary effort. And so we're trying to, you know, move that message forward. That was Congressman Chris's office.
And I was kind of hopeful after our, our discussion last week that the secretary was asking about work being done on the dunes, which he's familiar with on the East Coast, because he has a home over there, I guess. And we made it very clear to him that there was no work being done on the dunes and that's why we don't need these easements way up into the dunes. So I'm hoping that was enough to do the trick. He seemed to get it, why we didn't need this extra yeah, easement. So we'll see. Hopefully we'll know by the end of the year, but this is to kind of push them along.
I know Brian was very, Brian Lowak was very involved and felt much more comfortable with the second version. The first version was really putting more of the onus on the residents to sign up and, and release it without the first part, which I think we all agreed was really important, so.
We can send it out this afternoon.
But we do need, you're all okay to put our, both of our names on it.
Somebody would please. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Flowers, second from Commissioner Justice. Do I need?
Yeah, if you're going to vote, we need to take a public comment motion.
Go away. Brian, do we have any?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do we have any public comment?
At this time, if there are any members of the public who wish to comment, now this isn't an official agenda item, Madam Chair, correct?
No, it is not. It is an op-ed to be sent to the Tampa Bay Times.
Please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. Madam Chair, there's nobody that wishes to comment.
No, it's something we need to, okay, thank you. Which is what I told her. All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries seven zero. All right. Any other new business? Okay, Commissioner Eggers?
Brian, thank you very much. First of all, I wanted to wish Happy Hanukkah to all my Jewish friends and a Merry Christmas to all of you and our residents. Clearly hope everybody enjoys their family over the holidays and, including the New Year's Eve season. Secondly, I wanted to wish all of us, again, a really good, prosperous 2021. I know that we've really endured a lot and some of our residents have endured a lot more than others. So just special prayers and hopes and help for all of those residents who have lost a loved one, who have continuing mental and physical health issues and for all the businesses and individuals who have suffered financially. And I certainly know that we've got a long way to go still, but we, as long as we continue our focus on helping each other, I think it's, it'll, we'll get through this. And on a, on another note, I want to say on behalf of this commission, we're going to say thank you to our chair. On behalf of this commission and including, we'll add Ken Welch to that as well. We really want to thank you and your assistant, Whitney, obviously, for getting us through this last year. I just had written some things down here, but it was like, well, first of all, you weathered the shutdown, which was nothing that you expected when you started this. You weathered the reopening and then all the questions that went along with the reopening. You weathered the many everyday executive policy group meetings and that man always saying that we, as a commission, have been muted. And I, every time, every, because we can't get on that call together, because it would be a sunshine violation, he has to mute it from all the commissioners to participate. And he enjoys doing it and I laugh every time.
Way too much.
Yeah, it's way too much, exactly. She, she, she weathered chairing our meetings and, and taking the, I mean, I think it's important that the distinction between taking the the regular citizen input from that June 23rd meeting where we took 104 callers that came in. If you divide that by three minutes a caller and a little else, that's about five or six hours of chairing a meeting, listening to our residents, which is absolutely what we should have done and should be doing. But still, nonetheless, thank you for that. And she weathered the hurricane warnings and the emergency orders. And she weathered the concerns expressed throughout our county on social injustice issues in the middle of all this other stuff that was going on. She weathered the many extra meetings with our staff on all of these issues as the chair representing us. And she weathered the many press conferences on the same. And she weathered the normal, everyday activities as chair and commissioner. So I, I know that, on behalf of everybody here, and I'm sure, you know, folks may want to say their own thank you, but I just wanted to say thank you for the sacrifice that you've made during this tough year. You didn't get to have some of the enjoyments that you get to have as chairman. And I mean that in, in really a positive way to the meetings, the ribbon cuttings, the some, some necessary travel that goes on with the chair's office. But nonetheless, you stayed home, you took care of business here. And for all of that, we say thank you. And also thank you to your husband for his understanding of your sacrifices and his support throughout the year. So we have taken up a little offering to give you a Tumbalo card bookstore certificate that you can enjoy. We know you will enjoy it. And just thank you so much for your leadership this past year and I look forward to, of course, your contributing, your continuing contribution. So with that, maybe we could, if the other commissioners wanted to say a few words, if you could, I'll pass this down. If anybody else wanted to say a few words, otherwise we'll send it back to the chair. So anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Flowers.
But just wanted to say thank you so very much for having me to feel welcome, coming in, just kind of giving me some information about what I needed to do and, and how to conduct the business of the day the way that the commission does. And I've had a chance to also watch you through the commission meetings and I believe that you are very professional and have set quite a stellar example when it comes to leadership as chair of the County Commission. So thank you so very much for all of the hard work that you have done and the work that you will continue to do. Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Seal.
You were very eloquent, but Commissioner Gerard, yes, it was a really tough year. And between trying to manage the technology, be open to having people zoom in and accomplish it and just everything else, as Commissioner Eggers, the many meetings, the press conferences, and all in a tone of uncertainty. And the pressure, I think we individually felt, just worried about friends' health, our citizens' health and so on, but you had to keep us moving forward. And I really appreciate your leadership this year. And thank you very, very much. And it's not over yet. As I mentioned earlier, you got till December 31st. But come New Year's Day, Commissioner Eggers, welcome.
Sixteen days.
Thank you.
Not that I'm counting.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I think Commissioner Eggers and others have, the point I wanted to add was that because of the technology, because of people calling on Zoom, because it was a the issues we were dealing with were controversial and divisive in the community, because it was an election year, some of that personal vigil that, that overflowed into the meetings and a lot of it was directed at you. And again, you kept your composure and handled yourself and represented the commission well. And we thank you for the great year of service.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Could I just ditto what he just said? Because you were remarkable with some of the comments made from our citizens. I was ashamed of them many times. So, thank you.
Well, I don't think they were directed at me. I think they were directed at us and
Wow, okay.
And it helps having such a great group. I, I think we have a wonderful commission. I know some, somebody has to pick up that banner that Ken was always waving about. The perfect commission we have here. But we do have a wonderful group of dedicated people and it's almost been a pleasure. Some of it's been a pleasure. And I keep telling TDC that they owe me a trip somewhere, anywhere, you know, someday. Got that close to going to Germany. And I want to thank Brian. Brian, who's made these meetings possible. I mean, my God, talk about patience. And Whitney, of course, and Barry, who's been incredibly calm and collected through this whole crisis that continues to go on. You know, in spite of the fact that people think it's over. So yeah, and thank you. And Dave, please do me a favor and make mistakes. So otherwise you'll make me look really bad. Well, especially about asking for a public comment. You have to do that at least a few times so I don't feel bad. So having said that, I believe we're into a break until six.
Yeah, we have, we'll have dinners obviously, but we'll also have some cupcakes celebrating.
Cupcakes, okay.
Just what I need, cupcakes.
All right. Well, thanks. Thank you all.